Good morning, everyone. We will be joining you with a salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united, indivi- individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Roll call please.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Harrington?
Here.
Mr. Merrihill?
Here.
Mr. Gardner?
Here.
Mr. DePaul?
Here.
Mr. Farabee?
Here.
Mr. Monty?
Here.
Mr. McNally?
Here.
Mr. Skozvava?
Here.
Mr. Migga?
Here.
Mr. Pledy has been excused. Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Marnell?
Here.
Mr. Whitson?
Here.
Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Mr. Tyler?
Here.
Mr. Glowand?
Here.
And Mr. Preston?
Here.
Thank you.
This morning, we have a couple of guests to start off with. We're going to start with Kathy Rekia, the D.C. Grant Coordinator for Adirondack Lake Center of the Arts. Kathy? Good morning.
First of all, thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. My name is Kathy Rekia, and I'm Decentralization Grant Coordinator for Clinton, Essex, Franklin, and Hamilton Counties. Decentralization Grants are community arts and arts education grants that are administered by the Art Center in Blue Mountain Lake and funded by the New York State Council on the Arts. They go to 501(c)(3) organizations or individuals who use a 501(c)(3) as a conduit, and they go to individual teaching artists who are partnering with a school in one of the counties for a program. They also go to municipalities. For example, the town of Keene has been a recipient for the past three years that I have been an administrator of this grant. So I'm here today to announce the award winners from Essex County so that you can recognize them, and you all have a pamphlet in front of you with a list of the full award winners. We have a ceremony to honor all of them on April 30th. This year, it's going to be in Saranack Lake at the Adirondack Carousel, and you are all invited to come and shake hands with the folks from your town and learn a little more about their projects, because I'm just going to run through the list here. But if you have any questions about their projects, or if you are thinking of a project for your town and would like to talk to me about it for next year, the whole 2017 process officially will start in August when we have our guidelines up online, but I'm available all year long to talk to folks about project ideas and to give you tips on how to write this grant. So, in Essex County, the award winners are the Appleby Foundation for Rebecca Kelly Ballet's onstage dance program, and also for the Tahoe Center Cultural Programming Summer Series, which is in Osceola Forks, the Elizabeth Town Social Center for their summer programming art series, the Essex Community Concert Series, the Essex Theater Company for their production of Next to Normal, the Jay Entertainment and Music Society as a conduit for Tower Mulvey and Mountain to Mountain Children's Theater Workshops, and they also are a conduit for Norte Mar and Osable River Valley Studio Tour, Piano by Nature 2016 Concert Series, Ticonderoga Festival Guild Arts for Arts Trek Heritage Festival, as well as for the Festival Guild Players, the Ticonderoga Heritage Museum for a children's program called Nats Art, the Town of Keene for music from the back porch, the Wellensberg Grange for a celebration of the power of music when voices meet, a screening and concert with Sharon Katz and The P-Strain, and for arts education, Elizabeth Lee for patterns in nature photography, which will happen at the Westport Central School. So, if any of you have any questions, otherwise, I'm done, but I am available, and I will be at the luncheon today to talk about this further if anyone wants to discuss it.
Any questions for Kathy? I'll just add that, you know, as Kathy said, that Town of Keene has received us for the last three years, I believe, and that's what's funded our music on the back porch, by the way. We do that on Wednesday nights. You guys are all welcome to some of Keene on a Wednesday evening, or afternoon, actually, Wednesday afternoon. We have a great time there. Anything, Kathy? Nothing? Kathy, thank you very much. Thanks for the great work that you do.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Next, we have Marty Nephew, who's the Executive Director of the Mountain Lake Services, along with Jane Martin. They do have a video presentation. You guys, come on up, go do the presentation first. Good morning.
Good morning. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak here today about Mountain Lake Services and National Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. Each year, March is declared Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month as a way to promote awareness of the strengths and achievements of individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. For over forty years, Mountain Lake Services had a history of succeeding in our mission of enriching the lives of people with developmental disabilities, their families, and our communities. Through hard work and commitment, individuals have accomplished many remarkable things, such as climbing high peaks, becoming firefighters, volunteering in their local communities, getting married, and living full, happy lives. None of us would be possible without the strong tradition of family advocacy. In fact, that's how our agency was founded. A small group of parents got together from the agency, and their advocacy continues today. One of our board members, Ms. Jane Martin, is with me here today as a representative of the group Save Our Services, Families of Essex County. This advocacy group is mainly comprised of family members of people with disabilities. I'm going to turn it over to Jane. She's going to tell you a little bit about what they do, and then she's got a little video that was put on by, it was actually put out by New York State NICEARC, and we're going to share that with you. Jane?
Hi. Like Marty said, we have started a grassroots group, just like he said forty years ago they started it. And the reason we did this is because in the last two or three years, Albany has been cutting back all the funds for people with disabilities, and we need to be really vocal and get those funds back. Top of the list being getting onto the budget this year, because with the fifteen-dollar minimum wage for everyone, our agency cannot come up to that level without more money from Medicaid, and at this point, we're not in the budget. And if we don't get in it, it's going to be a big problem. We're going to be able, our services are going to get smaller, people are going to do less. It's really going to be a big hit for the ARC's all over New York State. So, part of our group, so, we've been trying to get other parents and family members on board with us and give them information, because a lot of them don't know what's going on. And the ARC has worked so well for so many years that they've just taken it for granted. Now, it's, we're at jeopardy. There's big problems happening, and there's going to be people that are just basically left out in the cold. And so that's what our group is for. We're trying to save our ARC and get the word out, and all the ARC's all over New York are doing the same thing. So, and the reason I'm so passionate about this is because I grew up in Philadelphia, and I have a sister, Susan. And in Pennsylvania, there was very few places where we could get any kind of help. Usually, it was very badly run, and if it was run well, it was private, and it was very expensive. And I moved up here in the seventies and got married. My mother ended up moving up here for health reasons, and then we moved Susan up here. And we just bumped into Mountain Lake Services, and it was like a dream come true. It was, you know, what we had been looking for all these years. They have wonderful residences that are safe, they have twenty-four-hour staff. So she went right into a residence, and after that, she joined the workshop, so she was working. In both places, in the residence and the workshop, they have a wonderful social life. They have friends, they do things with. It just, it really works excellent. And I've been watching this for thirty years. My sister Susan has been in this program for thirty years, and she has been so happy, and she's got lots of friends, and, you know, she feels like a person who contributes to society, you know, which is what they need to feel. So now, she's still in the residence, although they are cutting back funds, and there's a lot of people on the waiting list there that can't get into any of these residences. She worked at the workshop for about twenty-five years, and now she's like seventy-three, so she's getting older. She wasn't, they, she couldn't stay in the workshop, but Mountain Lake started a wonderful basket weaving guild over in Port Henry, and she's now doing that. And they make these beautiful baskets, and they sell them at the farmer's markets all summer long, and they love doing it, and they make money at it. And so for her, right now, it's a really nice spot for her. And then, on days when she's not at the basket weaving guild, she's at DAHAB. DAHAB is an alternative for sitting at home. DAHAB is where you go and you do projects, but it's not like working at the workshop over in Mineville, which is called Essex Industries, where you make money, you feel like a regular citizen. And every week, for really the last twenty-five years, Susan has told me exactly how much she's made in this workshop to the penny, and, you know, she feels like other people, other working people that have a full life. And I just can't say enough about Mountain Lakes and how wonderful it's been, and all the ARC's across New York State, which does not exist in any of the other states in the country. This is a wonderful program, and it's at incredible jeopardy right now. So what has started, NICEARC, which is New York State ARC, started a campaign called It Matters to Me, and you have some of that in your pamphlet that explains what we're trying to do. So the whole state is really in on this. There's five goals, the first one being trying to get people into these houses. Now, when Susan moved up, they just moved her in. Now, if you have a family member or a child that needs residence, you have to proclaim them homeless before they will be taken into this residence. And that's just not working. There are so many people that need to get in, and there's room for people to get in. So this is one of the problems that we're facing right now. The second one, of course, is the workshops. They've been changing the workshops, they want to have regular people in the workshops, which jeopardizes all the people with disabilities, because they can't keep up with regular people. So that has eliminated about, you know, I don't know, seventy-five percent of our people. So they have no job anymore. So they sit all day, every day, at DAHAB, doing nothing. It's a crime, really. The next one, of course, is the minimum wage that Governor Cuomo wants to, you know, pass for everyone, and I agree, it's nice to have a higher wage, but that leaves us out, because we're dependent on Medicaid. And if we don't get put in the budget, and if they don't raise our Medicaid, our employees, they're called DSPs, Direct Support Personnel, these are the ones that work in the residences, and they are there twenty-four-seven, and their starting wage is about eleven-seventy-five. Now, we can't compete, you know. First of all, it's a really hard job, they're really devoted, you know. A lot of these people have some serious issues, and you have to get to know them, know what the problems are, and be there for them. It'd be much easier to go to McDonald's for fifteen dollars an hour, clock in and clock out, and be the end of it. These people are so devoted, they do things on their days off with these people, they do things with their own money, you know, it makes their life possible. If Susan hadn't had this, she would be living with me. Now, my mother died in eighty-nine, and Susan moved into Mountain Lakes in eighty-six. If we hadn't had that, she would be living with me this entire time. I would not have been able to get married, have children, have a career, or anything, because I would have had to stay home with her, which would have been isolating for her, which is another big problem. When they're in this ARC, they have a wonderful social life. Living at home is not fun for them. They're totally isolated, you're isolated, it's not, it's just, it's not good, it's awful. And so Susan's been there, and I've had a life, she's had a life, and it's been wonderful. So another problem is the preschools. They've cut the funding for the preschools. Now, we know with anything, with regular children, as with disabled children, if you can get to them early on, you can do a lot, you can help them a lot. And all of the preschool programs have been cut back, and a lot of them are going to have to close. So that means there's nothing for the early-on disabled. The final part of this is transition services. So the people that are, can be mainstreamed into the schools, and a lot of them are for as long as they can, when they graduate, there's nothing for them. They graduate, and they go home, and they live at home for the rest of their lives. If they have something like Mountain Lake Services and Essex Industries, they have a full life ahead of them. They, you know, they have a lot, lot to look forward to. Without that, they really have nothing. So those are the five It Matters to Me campaigns that we're working on right now. And, you know, Essex County is, I'm sorry, Mountain Lake Services is the biggest employer in Essex County. And, you know, this is not going to just jeopardize Essex County, but all the states, I mean, all the counties. It's just financially, socially, everything, it's going to be a big problem. So we do have a nice video that was put together by Laura Kennedy, and she is the President of NICEARC, and it's very short, and it kind of gives you a thumbnail picture of exactly what's going on right now.
I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.[1390.66]
We cannot survive. I might awaken that. Wondering if this is going to be easier if I have to recommend to the board that we closed off three years.
It matters to me that this staff stays because without them, I wouldn't be the independent woman that I am today.
It matters to me because every child deserves the opportunity to be in fire, set up this school, to reach the top. It matters to me that these kids can play well, to make one back on my son's stand life.
It matters to me because I made it right to me enough of them and they can watch.
It matters to me. I do truly in a role pattern, I do truly in a way. It matters to me to be able to help.
It matters to me.
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 It was a great, uh, great video, guys, and, uh, you do a fantastic job. I think that's the quietest I've heard this film in a long time, as they watch that video. You really, uh, reach out to, uh, to so many folks and so many families. Uh, with that, I would like to present you with a proclamation. Um, oh, come on, man.
A proclamation, uh, for the Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, March 2016. Whereas forty-one years ago, Mount Lake Services was founded as a way for families to receive support for their children who were potential exolvent of disabled disabilities in Essex County. Dedicated families that were instrumental in forming this organization, trying for community service that were of high quality and value to the lives of their children. And whereas what began as a small agency with only a hand, only a handful of employees and services from every city has evolved to an organization which serves a person with five hundred people, with a collection of development, uh, uh, developmental disabilities, and is currently the largest employer in the county. The success of Mount Lake Services can be attributed to the drive, commitment, and diligence of all involved, including individuals, their families, and their communities. And whereas, Mount Lake Services will continue to provide innovative and exceptional support to individuals throughout Essex County. This organization remains committed to the mission while assisting people to develop independence and relationships, teamwork, individualism, choice, respect, integrity. And whereas, Mount Lake Services will continue to build on the history of increasing public awareness and understanding of individuals with disabilities and developmental disabilities through community participation and participation. As a result, adults and children throughout the county may recognize the importance of the social role, connectivity, meaningful work, and volunteer in community, about involvement of all people regarding disability. Now, our co-aholic, Harry, the chair, and on behalf of the Essex County Board of Supervisors, I hereby declare for twenty March, twenty sixteen, as a developmental disability awareness club, celebrating the achievements and contributions to individuals with developmental disabilities in Essex County, and urge at all citizens to observe this proclamation, this proclamation issued today, July, or March seventh, twenty sixteen.
Thank you.
I forgot to tell you all that we have a Facebook that if you would, you can learn a lot more about us and what we're doing. It's called Save Our Services, Families of Essex County. It might be in your package as well, but we post things on there all the time and, um, you know, you can just get more of an overview of what happened. So, we really need your help before March thirty-first, before this budget gets passed. And, um, thank you for having us here.
Thank you, James. Thank you, Marty. Really appreciate it. Okay, I'll go on to, uh, resolutions, too.
Resolution number forty-four, authorizing a correction of twenty sixteen Town and County tax rule, Towne Crown Point, Richard Knott, account number five eight five J one zero zero seven zero two.
Moved by Mr. Harrington. I have a second. Second, Mr. Mary Hugh. Comments or questions? Being none, roll call vote.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Mary Hugh?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Monti?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady has been excused. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
The resolution carries. Resolution forty-five, accepting, adopting, and placing in file policies, plans, procedures, and annual reports.
Moved by Mr. Scott, a second by Mr. Marnell. Comments or questions? Being none, roll call vote.
Oh, no.
Oh, excuse me. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close. Carry.
Resolution forty-six, of condolence to the family of Ronald and Purdy.
Would you like to move that, please?
Thank you.
Resolution forty-seven, authorizing the issuance of a permit to Lake Placid Marathon Inspiration Sports LLC for the use of county roadways for the twenty sixteen Lake Placid Marathon.
I'll move that, please. If you'd like to raise your plea.
Second.
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 Thank you.
Resolution forty-eight, of congratulations to Ethel Rice upon celebrating her one-hundredth birthday.
Moved by Mr. Scott, a second.
Resolution forty-nine, requesting a functional reclassification change on certain county roads from the New York State Department of Transportation. This is Wells Hill Road in Lewis.
Moved by Mr. Monti, second by Mr. Moore. Comments or questions? Being none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close. Carry.
Resolution number fifty, requesting a functional reclassification change on certain county roads from the New York State Department of Transportation, Reba Road, Wellsboro.
Moved by Mr. Golillen, second by Mr. Gardner. Comments or questions? None, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close. Carry.
Resolution fifty-one, requesting a functional reclassification change on certain county roads from the New York State Department of Transportation, Lakeshore Road, Essex.
Moved by Mr. Gardner, second. Second by Mr. Marnell. Comments or questions? None, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close. Carry.
Resolution number fifty-two, requesting a functional reclassification change on certain county roads from the New York State Department of Transportation, Stevenson Road, Westport.
Moved by Mr. Tyler, second by Mr. Scott, a second. Comments or questions? None, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close. Carry.
Resolution number fifty-three, requesting a functional reclassification change on certain county roads from the New York State Department of Transportation, Tahoz Road, Newcombe.
Moved by Mr. Miga, second by Mr. Moore. Comments or questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close. Carry.
Resolution number fifty-four, authorizing a contract amendment with Schroeder River Associates for engineering services, including final design, bidding, and construction phase services as it relates to the Halls Falls Road reconstruction project in the town of Keene, in an amount not to exceed forty-two thousand five hundred from budgeted funds, and authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute the same.
Would you like to move that, please? One second. Mr. Mary Hugh. Comments or questions? None, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Mary Hugh?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Monti?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady has been excused. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Goland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
The resolution carries. Resolution number fifty-five, authorizing a contract amendment with Dente Engineering for engineering services, including geotechnical engineering report and performing subsurface investigations as it relates to the Hazeltine Road Bridge over New Bridge Brook in the town of Wilmington, in an amount not to exceed nine thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars from budgeted funds, and authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute the same.
Moved by Mr. Preston, second. Mr. Depot. Comments or questions? None, roll call vote.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Mary Hugh?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Monti?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady has been excused. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Goland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
The resolution carries. Resolution number fifty-six, authorizing a contract amendment with Dente Engineering for engineering services, including performing subsurface investigations and providing geotechnical engineering reports as it relates to Fratton Road Bridge over Paradox Creek in the town of Scroon, in an amount not to exceed nine thousand three hundred dollars from budgeted funds, and authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute the same.
Moved by Mr. Marnell, second by Mr. Moore. Comments or questions? Being none, roll call vote.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Mary Hugh?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Monti?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady has been excused. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Goland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
The resolution carries. Resolution number fifty-eight, authorizing a contract amendment with Dente Engineering for engineering services, including performing subsurface investigations and providing geotechnical engineering reports as it relates to Trout Brook Road Bridge over Trout Brook and the town of Minerva, in an amount not to exceed nine thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars from budgeted funds, and authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute the same.
Moved by Mr. McNally, second. Mr. Moore, Mr. Mee. Comments or questions? None, roll call vote.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Mary Hugh?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Monti?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady has been excused. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Goland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
The resolution carries. Resolution number fifty-eight, authorizing a contract amendment with Dente Engineering for engineering services, including performing subsurface investigations and providing geotechnical engineering reports as it relates to Trout Brook Road Bridge over Minerva Brook in the town of Minerva, in an amount not to exceed nine thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars from budgeted funds, and authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute the same.
Moved by Mr. McNally, second, Mr. Miga. Comments or questions? None, roll call vote.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Mary Hugh?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Monti?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady has been excused. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Goland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
The resolution carries. Resolution number fifty-nine, authorizing the chairman or county manager to file an application for state assistance for household hazardous waste state assistance program, and authorizing the execution of the associated state contract under the laws of New York State.
Moved by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Miga. Comments or questions? Being none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close. Carry.
Resolution number sixty, of congratulations to the Mariah Central School Girls Varsity Basketball Team for winning the twenty fifteen sixteen section seven class D championship.
Moved by Mr. Scott, a second.
And they will, they will be playing in Glen's Falls Friday and hopefully Saturday. And this team here probably has the best shot of any team ever to win a state championship. So, I'm hoping that the next resolution will be congratulating them as New York State Champions.
That's what I wanted to ask. I don't know, Tom, um, I know that the, the schools like to post, put these in their trophy cases.
Yes.
And I'm just throwing this out here. Same thing with Osable Valley. They're, they're the next resolution. We might want to dis-table this until it's all finished so we can make a really nice resolution that, uh, it's up to you. If you want to have individual resolutions for, uh, in essence, you would have, uh, two resolutions probably. This one for winning section seven.
Section seven, yeah.
And then the next one would be for winning, uh, the
State.
Some, the semifinals and then maybe the state. Or you could put it all in one. I don't know what, how you want to do it. You want to do it separately?
Oh, right. I don't, I, we could do it all, all in one, I believe.
It might be better. You have a historical accounting.
Right.
Somebody loses one of these, guy.
Right, yeah.
And it would, and it'll be, uh, better worded and probably more meaningful, in my opinion.
That's fine. I hate to table it. That could be a bad omen.
All right, well, if you're, if you're, it doesn't really matter.
You can leave it. You're already
Looking at the next one. We'll leave this, Tom?
All right, we'll leave it.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
It was manner.
Resolution number sixty-two, of condolence to the family of Brian Robert Finney, senior.
Moved by Mr. Monti.
Resolution number sixty-three, of condolence to the family of Catherine G. Swat.
Moved by Mr. Monti.
Resolutions from the floor. Resolution of congratulations to the Osable Valley Central High School Boys Varsity Basketball Team for winning the twenty fifteen sixteen section seven class D championship.
Moved by Mr. Depot.
Resolution amending, resolution number thirty-nine, of February eighth, twenty sixteen, authorizing the purchasing agent to bid or request proposals, an award contract for an asphalt paver for the Department of Public Works with funds to come from highway unexpended fund balance, and authorizing the county, the chairman or county manager to execute a contract for the same.
Will both allow that on the floor?
Yes, you do.
Moved by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Monti. Comments or questions? Being none, roll call vote.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Mary Hugh?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Monti?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady has been excused. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Goland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
The resolution carries. Resolution authorizing the purchasing agent to award contract for online auction services for surplus goods to absolute auctions in realty, from budgeted funds, and authorizing the camp, chairman or county manager to execute a contract for the same.
Moved by Mr. Golillen, second. Oh, excuse me, I have twelve allowed on the floor?
Yes.
Moved by Mr. Golillen, second by Mr. Marnell, Mr. Mary Hugh. Comments or questions? None, roll call vote.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Mary Hugh?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Monti?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady has been excused. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Goland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
The resolution carries. Resolution number fifty-six, authorizing a contract amendment with Dente Engineering for engineering services, including performing subsurface investigations and providing geotechnical engineering reports as it relates to Fratton Road Bridge over Paradox Creek in the town of Scroon, in an amount not to exceed nine thousand three hundred dollars from budgeted funds, and authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute the same.
Moved by Mr. Marnell, second by Mr. Moore. Comments or questions? Being none, roll call vote.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Mary Hugh?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Monti?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady has been excused. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Goland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
The resolution carries. Resolution number fifty-five, authorizing a contract amendment with Dente Engineering for engineering services, including performing subsurface investigations and providing geotechnical engineering reports as it relates to the Hazeltine Road Bridge over Trout Brook and the town of Minerva, in an amount not to exceed nine thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars from budgeted funds, and authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute the same.
Moved by Mr. McNally, second, Mr. Mee. Comments or questions? Being none, roll call vote.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Mary Hugh?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Monti?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady has been excused. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Goland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
The resolution carries. Resolution number fifty-nine, authorizing the chairman or county manager to file an application for state assistance for household hazardous waste[1226.82] Team for winning the 2015-16 Section 7 Class C Championship.
Moved by Mr. Depot? Uh, have 12 allowed on the floor?
Yes, you do.
Give him a second. Okay. Moved by Mr. Depot? Give him a second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Well, it's really twelve. Um, resolution, amending resolution number 39 of February 8th, 2016, authorizing the purchasing agent to bid or request proposals, an award contract for an asphalt paver for the Department of Public Works with funds to come from highway unexpended fund balance, and authorizing the county, the chairman or county manager to execute a contract for the same.
Let's both allow that on the floor.
Yes, you do.
Moved by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Monty. Comments or questions? Being done, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Mary Hugh?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Monty?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady has been excused. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Grohlend?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution, authorizing the purchasing agent to award contract for online auction services for surplus goods to absolute auctions in realty, from budgeted funds, and authorizing the chairman or county manager to execute a contract for the same.
Moved by Mr. Golillen, and a second, oh, excuse me, have 12 allowed on the floor?
Yes.
Moved by Mr. Golillen, second by Mr. Marnell, Mr. Mary Hugh. Comments or questions? None? Roll call vote.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Mary Hugh?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Monty?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady has been excused. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Grohlend?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution, authorizing the purchasing agent to award contract for nursing services for the Essex County JL to University of Vermont Health Network at Elizabeth Town Community Hospital, from budgeted funds, and authorizing the chairman or county manager to execute a contract for the same.
Twelve allowed on the floor?
Yes, you do.
Moved by Mr. Gardner. Second, Mr. Moore. Comments or questions? Mr. Monty.
Is this in addition to the nurses we have on staff down there?
Yeah, we have one nurse on staff down.
We have one?
Yeah.
Nurse on staff. This was, um, what we discussed with possibility of the per diem?
Well, we did talk about that, but at this point, the sheriff isn't requesting that we pass this the way it is.
Who are you adding staff?
It does not add staff. These are contract, um, with the hospital. It's the way we've been doing it for the last, I don't know, five years or something.
Just go to the floor.
So, the, the hours are anticipated. That doesn't necessarily mean you're gonna, they're gonna, the LPN will be there for 2,288 hours or...
It doesn't, it entirely is driven by the, the staff, the inmate population and what they need as they come into the facility.
So, are we, we're mandated by Commission of Corrections to have a nurse based on the number of...
Yeah. If we don't have a nurse there to do it, we have to physically bring them up to the facility to provide medicine or to do any of that kind of stuff. So, we're in a position where we have to have somebody there in order to be able to do that. If we don't, it costs considerably more because then you end up using two deputies to transport and those kinds of things, so... You know, over the years, we felt this is the most cost-effective way. I'm not saying that Jim doesn't have a point when he talks about having per diem nurses and that's certainly something that probably should be looked at. We do need to renew the contract for next year as well, so if that's an issue that we want to address during the course of this year, we should probably do that. But, in the meantime, you know, I feel like Richard needs the coverage now and this is the contractor provides that. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? None? Roll call vote.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Mary Hugh?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Monty?
No.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady has been excused. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Grohlend?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution, authorizing appointments to boards, committees, and/or councils.
Twelve allowed on the floor?
Yes, you do.
Moved by Mrs. Skazavala, second by Mr. Harrington. Comments or questions? Scuzo, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Mary Hugh?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Monty?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady has been excused. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Grohlend?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Um, I just want to make one comment. The tax to the resolution is a, a resume, and that was just for your purposes. Uh, we're not going to include that in the, in the official minutes. We're just going to clog it up, but it's not something that...
Resolution of congratulations to the Keene Central School Girls Varsity Basketball Team for being runner-up in the 2015-2016 Section 7 Class C Championship.
Twelve allowed on the floor?
Yes, you do.
I'd like to move that, please? Second, aye? Second, thank you.
Resolution of congratulations to Hannah Whitney of Keene Central School Girls Varsity Basketball Team for scoring her 1,000th, 1,000th point. 1,000.
Twelve allowed on the floor? I'd like to move that, please?
Yes, you do.
I'd like to add that Ms. Whitney is a junior, so she'll be back next year.
Resolution of congratulations to Alina Smith of Keene Central's, Central School Girls Varsity Basketball Team for scoring her 1,000th point.
Have 12 allowed on the floor?
Yes, you do.
I'd like to move that. Second, aye? I'd also like to add that she's a junior. Mariah, speak out.
I think, I think they scored the foul point against Mariah when they were calling Mariah, actually.
Resolution, amending resolution number 254 of September 15th, 2014, establishing a standard workday and time reporting for all elected and appointed officials employed by the County of Essex for retirement system purposes and submitted to the New York State and local retirement system for the 2014 reporting period.
Twelve allowed on the floor?
Yes, you do.
Moved by Mr. Mary Hugh, second, Mr. Moore. Comments or questions? Um, basically, this is just a resolution amending the one that we submitted in 2014. Um, the comptor's office noticed, uh, and it wasn't clear to us, uh, on some of the individuals on the attachment, the terms of office were not listed, um, so we went back and we, and we inserted that. And also, uh, on the previous resolution, um, there were individuals listed that, stated that they did not submit timesheets, and, uh, those timesheets were submitted, um, so that's, those are the amendments. Um, the attachment has, you'll see, does not look very, uh, professional. Uh, we had, uh, I noticed as I was putting this together that, uh, the first, uh, five-digit social security number are on there, so those have all been removed. Uh, this will be cleaner, we'll remove them, but, uh, I didn't notice until just before the meeting, that's why you have the blackout there, so it'll be better. Any further comments or questions? Being done, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Mary Hugh?
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Monty?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady has been excused. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Grohlend?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. That's all I have, yep.
Any further resolutions, Mr. Skazavala?
Yes, I have, um, actually two. The first would be a resolution recognizing Julia Padres, who recently celebrated her 104th birthday from Whitherby, New York.
Twelve allowed on the floor?
Yes, you do.
Second? She doesn't look a day over 90, I told you.
Yeah, she looks good.
She's in great shape.
Yeah.
Really is. And the other, unless Mr. Morrow plans to move this one in recognition and, and thanks to Charles Bryant, are you doing that, Jerry?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, being a representative from the IDA board, I'd like to move a record. Resolution of appreciation for all the years that Charles Bryant from Mariah served on our IDA board. Very good.
Twelve allowed on the floor?
Yes, you do.
Second, aye? Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Also, I'd like to move a resolution of condolence to the family of Charles Charlie Crownshue, who passed away a couple weeks ago.
Twelve allowed on the floor?
Yes, you do.
Mr. Tyler?
Resolution, uh, we had a player, Westport Anderson Gay, scored 1,000 points this year also.
Twelve allowed on the floor?
Yes, you do.
Second, aye? Thank you.
He just scored all one year. It took him a couple years. We, uh, we actually are still doing the search. We feel that Ms. Whitney was the first female ever to score 1,000 points was Keene Central School. That's not set in stone as yet, but we're still looking.
So, that means the other girl was the second. She will be the second. Uh, she was the first. Good, you're good. Yeah, usually I'm sleeping, but...
Any further business to come before this? Uh, if there's no further business, I'd like to request a brief executive session for purposes of legal advice on the matter with the universal settlement, uh, regarding the nursing home and, uh, Medicaid reimbursement. Won't take long. Yeah, we need a motion in a second. You don't need 12.
12, Mr. Mary Hugh and Mr. McNally. All in favor?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both? Carry, thank you. Time is 12 minutes after 11, and somebody like to move a motion that we return to executive session. Moved by Mr. Mary Hugh, which we can't, and then by Mr. Morrow, or Mr. Moore. Uh, during, uh, executive session, there were no decisions made. Have any further business to come before the board? Mr. Skazavala?
Yeah, I just, I guess for Dan, is there any new developments on the nutrition kitchen?
No, not at this point. I mean, we're still, um...
Are we still shut down over there or...
No, they're, they're, they're doing meals over there.
They are.
Yeah, yeah.
They did the air test all out?
Yeah, they did the air test.
Thank you.
Anything further? Nothing further coming before the board, let's get adjourned. Thank you.